Hello, everybody. It is April 22. And this is our school committee meeting, our new Zoom format. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to global community. This is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. In our order business this afternoon is the call to order opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. We'll have some time for public comment. And our administrative items include COVID-19 update, Connolly Bus Contract Adjustment, Washington DC Trip 2020 Refund, Accept Collaborative Bus Contract Adjustment, Out-of-District Payments for FY 2020, High School Update, Middle School Update, Warren Approvals, Approval of Minutes April 14, 2020 and April 15, 2020. Committee Reports of Activities Member Updates, Action Items, and then we will adjourn. Is everybody okay with that order of business today?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'm just gonna bounce over to read the rules about Zoom participation. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we're utilizing the Zoom conferencing platform to conduct our meeting and all board committee members are participating remotely. The goal is to maintain the spirit of the open meeting law, providing access and transparency to all proceedings. When appropriate efforts will be made to allow for public participation through the Zoom platform. Your patience with any technical difficulties is appreciated as we conduct meetings in this new way. And I'm going to take a roll call to see which members are here. So Mr. Terry, I see you're on mute, but I see your face.
Yep, here.
Kathy Bates.
Here.
Paul Kendall. Aaron Williams, are you here? Aaron is not here as of yet, but we may see her at some point. So I will start by just asking if there's anybody from the public who's watching that wants to make a comment before we get started. You can either raise your hand through the Zoom platform, and I see you, Mr. DeSoni, you will be first. And anybody else who wants to talk can either raise their hand like Mr. DeSoni just did, or through the Zoom platform, and I will see you. If I have not seen you and you want to say something, just unmute yourself and do a shout out. So we will start. I've lost Mr. DeSoni. Are you still here? Mark, okay, so you need to be unmuted. Can you do that, Jim, or should they do that themselves?
Um, I'm trying to unmute him, but I can't.
Oh, okay.
There he goes.
There he is.
Hi, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say a couple of things. First to Mr. Adams. Is the governor of the state here has kind of made the order having school close for the year. And I can't understand. That's a hardship. It's been going on to talk about. Now it's official. And I brought up a school committee meeting at the last town hall one about remote learning, and now the government is saying that should be a state thing go around. It's up to the educators administrators and all that. That's why I want to hear how he, how Mr. Adams feels about it. That's one. Two, this past Saturday night, I saw the dance in Michael Carr on TV. Boy, you got a whole neighborhood all jazzed up and going there, didn't you? That's your answer after, but by far it's down to the TV called Echols. So to Mr. Adams about the school closing and the remote learning, and Mr. Carr, the hot feet on this turf. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I'll address that when I speak to the COVID update.
Sounds good. And Mr. Carr, do you have anything to say about your new world famous status? Ellen DeGeneres mentioning you in front of the entire world and showing your dancing face?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was pretty fun. Thanks. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate you saying that. It's been fun. It's been a lot of fun. Glad we could bring some joy. I really can't even take credit for the idea. It was all my wife's idea, so she's the one that deserves all the credit for this one. It's, uh, it's, it's been pretty neat, that's for sure.
Bringing joy to a lot of people. So thank you. Anybody else want to say anything before we move further down the agenda?
I think Mike probably got more cred with his daughter because Ellen, Ellen called out his name, it looked like.
Did you get some dad points for that? Awesome. All right, so moving along, Mr. Adams with your COVID update, please.
Sure. First, let me see if Rachel would like to say a few words. I know she has go to a virtual Villanova thing today. And I want to give her an opportunity to, you know, speak if she would, because I can see the sadness in her lovely face.
Yeah, disappointing. I knew it was coming, but it just made it that much more real. I know that everyone's gonna do everything they can to make this just as special as if we had school and class day and senior week and graduation. But we're all definitely disappointed. We wish we could go back to the building, say our goodbyes in the traditional way. But we know that there's always a place for us here in Ashland, so, you know, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well said, Rachel. I'm sorry.
Hard to follow that. Yeah. So, thanks, Rach. So I don't, I don't know where to begin, to be honest, but thinking about yesterday, we had a phone call in the morning with the Commissioner of Education and followed up with, obviously, the governor's announcement at noon yesterday with regard to the closure of schools for the remainder of the year. Certainly, it's been a roller coaster for all of us, I think. Whether it's students or parents or teachers, administrators, our entire staff is, I think, dejected to a certain level of we want to be with our kids. We want to be present more than, obviously, being on a Zoom timeframe with, with kids and with teachers and you don't get that same vibrancy, you don't get the same joy. You don't see the interaction that I think what we all crave, so it's official, didn't make it any less real or less shocking, or I felt, I felt as though I was talking to Jeff Marsden, who's the superintendent of Medfield, and he texted me as we're, as the conversation was unfolding with the governor, and he says, I just, I feel like I'm still in a dream. I can't, I can't wrap my head around it. We knew this was coming. We had a heads up, but until it was officially stated, it was, it felt like we were still in that dream, so. But a lot of nuggets did come out of the conversation yesterday with the commissioner, and I think it's important as part of the COVID update that you get those. Two, the second thing besides the closing was Friday, they'll be publishing from the commissioner's office more information on remote learning and what that may, you know, morph into. Again, we've had a few iterations already from the state level. But now we know we are in for the remainder of the year. Our plan is really solid. And what they're going to be looking at potentially doing is having a little more deeper dive into what the commissioner and what we've called as well are the power standards, so identifying some specific areas across the frameworks and saying, let's focus on these for the next eight weeks and do the best we can with that. The commissioner is still very much concerned about the gaps in technology across the Commonwealth, the gaps that will exist in learning, that we cannot replace the, the learning that our students get in front of our teachers. This is not a replacement for that, and we all recognize that. Some people have adapted to it a lot more quickly. They're really good. I sat in on four classes last Friday, and it was awesome to see, I mean, you could see the different comfort levels, though, by teachers presenting information. But, but kids were engaged, and the commissioner again has spoken a lot about, he cares most about connection. He wants to make sure that we are connecting with our kids. That is what's critically important. I know how this committee feels about social emotional well-being, and that is what's important. And the commissioner has time and time again said, we have great educators. We will make up the learning gap. We will figure that out. And if it's identifying power standards to teach to, we will do that. He alluded to a soft opening, if you will, in the summer. Obviously, you know, Kathy still was on here too, and we, when we're talking about extended year programs and summer school opportunities and but we have no guidance with that yet. The commissioner has, or the governor has closed schools down through June 29. That's right now how it looks. That being said, we don't know what the summer programming will look like. They are working towards guidance on the soft opening, if you will, to try to get it right in the summer, so we can work out kinks for the fall. I know I've had people email me and say, hey, you know, why are you even talking nonsense that the fall is not a, it's gonna just be open and it's gonna be smooth sailing. It's not. There will be guidance that comes directly from the commissioner as well as the governor with regard to opening school buildings. We are not designed to be socially distant from one another in a classroom, in a school setting. It just doesn't happen. So we have to be patient with the process from the state in helping us identify ways to do this. I don't have those answers. I know we've talked about as an admin team, how to do it, or what it could look like, but we're not going to be able to move forward with that until we get specific guidelines from the state. They, another piece I just wrote in my notes, we need to make sure that everyone who's listening or watches this go on, has, if you have the ability to go online, make sure you do the census and get that information in, because the commissioner again spoke to the fact that Massachusetts and our communities get funding through the federal government through the census as well, right? So they use that data to help with our allocations of resources. September 14 will be, they have to do some work, but that will be a state holiday. We've already approved it in the calendar. We don't have to worry about that. But it will not replace next April's Patriots Day, so what, both those holidays. There's still conversation at the state level, and Barbara will speak to this a little bit later. It's on the agenda with regard to payment of, to vendors and out-of-district vendors and specifically. And while the commissioner has made it clear from day one back in March, in the middle of March, he, he wants us, and it's guidance, it's not a requirement. He wants us to be paying our vendors for our out-of-district. He wants us to be paying our transportation vendors. He, that's been the guidance the whole time. That's, but it's not requirement. I want to be clear on that. I think next week we have to take up the conversation again with regard to our hourly employees, and as you know, we did set a standard through May 4 of payment, and we have to have that conversation next week, and we will make sure we have that on the agenda, and we have the financial picture for that. I will send another, you know, the principals have been working with families that need technology directly with the IT department, so we will have a discussion whether we need to send out another blast to families since we now know that we are out through the end of June 18. And the last piece on COVID-19 is, what's the financial impact gonna be? And how is that going to impact the public schools in FY 20 and FY 21? Currently, the conversation at the state level is the revenues, while not on target for FY 20, they have not processed or stopped the, the payments out of, out of the funds, the revenues from the state level. They do not anticipate any 9C cuts for FY 20. That was the word yesterday. Obviously, that could change quickly, but I think Barbara's done a phenomenal job of getting us in a position where we can absorb some of these things if needed. As, as the town has as well. I think we're, you know, we've done a really good job as a community, you know, setting aside the funding in our, in our stabilization funds, et cetera. Hopefully, FY 20, we will not need to worry about that. Moving forward, FY 21, we are still quite concerned about the loss of revenue and how that will impact our budget that, that you all passed back in February. We do not have any more knowledge as to what that will look like, but again, anywhere between 10 and 15% loss of revenue will negatively impact our budget as well locally. So that's all the grim news. The positive piece is, like I said, I, I was able to get into some classes last week and interact with kids, and it felt good. And try to get to, to do more and more of that, I think will put me in a better state of mind in terms of my happiness. So tired of my family room, or my spare bedroom, I should say. So that's the COVID update. Questions?
I've got a couple, if I can jump in on. I'll, I'll item, Jimmy, you're just taking orders. One, just if you could explain what, what the power standards are. Two, when you're talking about payment of vendors, I assume that we're talking about is payment of vendors who are not providing services as opposed to those who are, I assume would be, would be paying anybody who's performing services for the district and, of course. And then the third one is just any more information from, from the commissioner's call about the timing of the state budget being completed?
So let me go in reverse. No to the last question. There was no discussion as to what the timing will be on, on the budget and what a proposal will be. At, at this point, they are working, you know, together from, you know, the House Ways and Means and trying to, in the governor's office, trying to present one budget, so they're collaborating on that. I think the initial thought process was hopefully by the middle of May, there might be an initial budget squared away. I don't see that happening. The vendor issue is yes for paying for services that aren't necessarily being rendered, but also there are some, it's sort of a tricky question, because we do have some students who might otherwise be in a residential setting, who may not be getting the same exact educational experience that they were getting with a specific placement. Those are, those are, I mean, those are questions that we're asking and trying to figure out how we approach that. And the first question, power standards are basically just identifying specific, within the frameworks of curriculum in Massachusetts, we've got standards that we're supposed to be teaching to, not, you know, so a power standard is identifying those that are most critically important that we focus on for the remainder of the year, which will hopefully close some of the gaps that might be developing before we enter into next year's school year. So instead of teaching all of the frameworks, it's boiling it down to some very specific things that we want our educators at all grade levels to focus on.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did I get that okay, Mr. Vera?
You did. You nailed it, Mr. Adams.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on to the next item?
Can I unmute Mr. DeSoni for a second?
Yes, or, yes. Mr. DeSoni, you're back. But you're not unmuted. There you go.
I, I want to be positive with a compliment about how honest Mr. Adams has been about this whole thing, and I'm chairman to some of the board members that know me from being at the school and hanging around and understanding what school can be about. I am a positive influence to, from Mr. Adams to say he is worth the salt that he has inside himself. And to understand his emotions, he wears it on his sleeve, and that's the best way to have a person be, be honest, be truthful, and then tell what he feels and says, say what he looks and how he sees things. To the chairman, I thank you for the time. I'm going back on. I'm gonna unmute myself, I mean mute myself and turn the TV back on so I can hear you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Well, thank you for that very heartfelt comment. Mr. Adams is gonna continue on, I guess, with his honest move down the agenda. We do have some difficult things to discuss. And so I don't know if it's you, Jim, or Barbara.
It'll be a combination, I think.
So whoever wants to start on the update on the, the bus situation and possibly vote today, I guess?
Yeah, we do. We, we need to make some decisions. And it's the, the bus contract piece, there are a couple, couple pieces here. When we're looking at the contract, last time we brought it forward to you last Wednesday, we were looking at a potential savings of, was it 46% from the daily rate, using the daily rate, and the, the committee had asked us to go back and have conversations with, with our attorney, but also with potentially with the other districts that are working with Connolly Bus on, should they receive some of the SBA loan money? How would that impact the continued reimbursement or the, the negotiations on this? I did reach out to other superintendents, heard back from three, and some have answers, it ranged from, I'm just letting my business person handle it, to, you know, we believe the language that our attorney had crafted, meaning national language, is good language, but there's no incentive for Connolly to even consider that language. And, you know, what would that look like? Then late last night, I'll let Barbara explain this piece, that, that business managers that have been negotiating with Connolly asked some pointed questions with regard to the SBA loan and what the use of those funds were going to be. So Barbara, I'll turn that over to you, because I think that's a critical component to the questions that you all were asking last week.
Okay, sure. So as Jim was emailing superintendents, I was emailing all the business managers. And, and they were all over the board. Some were like, no, we're fine with it the way it is, and other ones were like, no, we're pushing for some language also about getting that credit back. So we asked Ian Galati and Sam Rippon to go back to Connolly and have that conversation with them. What does that look like? And they did, and they got back to us last night, and pretty well laid out that the revenue from the charter buses, the, the field trips and the athletics is the bread and butter for the bus companies. And they did not pass on any of those costs or any of the revenue that they're not getting to the districts. And that's why they're going after the SBA money so that they can recoup the revenue from their charter portion of their business without passing it back on to us. So he's saying if we want to push for a credit out of the SBA loan, and he has to go back and renegotiate, recalculate the per diem cost that we were all given, because now he's gonna charge the charter lost revenue back to the districts. So with that news, everybody who responded said, we're gonna go forward with the original contract amendment. We're not gonna push for the credit. So, questions?
I'll just, I'll just jump in. Not, not so much of the comment, but sort of first with appreciation for the follow-up, Barbara, and Jim. You know, I think the concern that both myself and Mr. Kendall expressed was we're not, we didn't want to do something that ultimately was going to be putting Connolly in a, in a win situation. The idea was to try to come up with some reasonable agreement that provided us with the access to a bus company to fulfill the obligations it has under the contract rather than have to risk them going under because they have no, no revenue stream. And then the idea of talking about sort of this offset was just to avoid that kind of windfall scenario for Connolly. But I think the way that, that you've gotten this additional piece of information, I, you know, I could, I could quibble with the idea that really would have been wise for Connolly to share that thought process upfront, make it a little easier, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think what that means is we've achieved a fair balance on the issue with the original proposal. At least conceptually, I'm gonna defer to to whomever's negotiating the language in the contract, the wording. But, you know, I think the concern that we had, at least from, from my perspective, has been resolved in a way that makes me feel comfortable and supporting the agreement that was proposed. And I'll, I'll say maybe the deal that was proposed rather than the document itself.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
As soon as I was the other one to voice that, I, I concur with Mark that I appreciate the follow-up. I can't say as though I'm comfortable still with it, just because the whole, the whole thing is keep them viable, not to make the same amount of money they would have made before, right? So the charters and things like that, they incur very little or no expenses other than the, that is the bread and butter, because that's the other thing is what makes them viable, and then that what makes them profitable. And so the, the idea isn't to make themselves profitable again and to the same level they would have been, but to keep them viable. And so I don't know, the things they took off of the per diem were things that they weren't, the costs that were occurring, so and if you're negotiating, that's the kind of default thing you come back with is that, hey, I'm gonna go do this other thing, so I mean, I'll go with what the, what the rest of the group wants to do. I, I think that's just, you know, I don't know that how that, how they're not viable if they are getting the, the things and so, I, I guess I, I fall a little short of Mark's comfort level with it, just because those weren't guaranteed revenues anyway, right? So those are variable revenues that you know, may fluctuate to certain extents anyway.
And I, I, when I say I'm comfortable with it, it doesn't necessarily mean that I am comfortable that everything has been presented as, you know, sort of only the right answer. You know, I kind of am taking approach of, largely, you know, deferring to the people who've been at the table to, to have explored that. And they certainly feel very comfortable with Barbara being our representative in that process. But, you know, feeling kind of two steps removed, because I don't think Barbara, I don't think you're one of the people at the table. You know, I'm kind of, I'm trusting that those who've been involved have kind of done the due diligence to drill down on, on that kind of question of sort of what's the, where's the, where's the profit, where's the viability line, what are the expenses? You know, I honestly think that, you know, you could probably pause now and say, gee, does anything change in terms of expense projections, because now we know that not gonna be needing those buses at all this year. And we've gotten the per day calculations, but was their insurance rate drop? You know, so they're, they're saving us there, and I just think there's, there's gonna be something in there that we don't know. And I want to be real cautious, at least for myself, and sort of questioning beyond what I feel like I can reasonably ask about. Two Barbara's are representative, and I have to believe that two people who have been at the table negotiating this have kind of gotten to an endpoint where they're like, okay, you know, we're, we're there. I think the reality is we, we all could just say, if we wanted to, we don't think we have an obligation of the contract at all, not pay him a dime and see what happens. But I don't think that's in our best interest.
Right, and I think that's why.
I, I wasn't, wasn't in any way, shape or form questioning. I I wasn't wasn't in any way, shape or form questioning. You know, I appreciate Barbara involved and the people negotiating, but even like. The thing you just brought up was a was a fair point. Most car, you know, insurance companies are doing something for when there's not people utilizing the vehicles and different things. I don't know if that. That pertains and translates to this either, but you know, so it it's it's really just a comfort level with. With with those high level things.
So let me just address the insurance because that certainly was discussed. The offset, the counter from Connolly is they have laid off all their people. They're in. Talks with unemployment to see how much their rates are going to be going up. Because of the unemployment cost. So. You you know, there's a couple of things that we're not sure how it would work out money wise. But we we looked at all those costs, the the two business managers who. Stood up and spoke on everyone's behalf, I have complete and other faith in. That they went in there and did what they could.
Yeah, I think, you know, for me, it's it's layered, you know, depending on which, you know, goggles you're wearing when when you look at it, right? You could just look at the contract in and of itself and say, what's our obligation under that? And it was an argument, you know, for doing nothing. But obviously, in the big picture, that didn't make sense. And we're also trying to be on board with other districts. So there's the sensitivity to, you know, where they're coming from and then they're. Getting some information from their attorneys, perhaps. We're getting information from our attorney. Barbie's meeting with all the different people who hold the same position that that she does. So. While I can't disagree with anything that I've heard when you're just hearing that one point. I think when you apply it to the big picture, I mean, for me, and I think I said a little bit of this last time. You know, some of these decisions that we're making, it's important to me to kind of understand. Well, how does that leave us afterwards when we're trying to address our own situation? So when we're giving, you know, money out here or there and whatever, because we're trying to do the right thing and because we want to. Coordinate with other districts and because we want to be able to work with these vendors when we come out the other side. I just want to make sure that we're not directing funds in places where we might have been able to use them to take care of our own employees instead of Connolly's employees. I I don't, I'm not saying that that's what's happening here. So at the bottom line is. I, after all of that. And we have gone to Barbie with all our concerns and questions and Jim. And you're the one that's in the meeting and having the discussions with everybody. And it sounds like most of the. Points have been raised collectively and I I. Trust your recommendation as as the best way forward right now, but it's not uncomplicated.
Correct.
From my point of view.
Barbara, just a quick question. The the feedback that you received, has our attorney weighed in on that relative to the, you know, and and what's what's the guidance there?
So our attorney tweaked the language. So we we were sent a template from Needham's Legal Counsel. John Foskett reviewed it. He did tweak one of the paragraphs and then he added a paragraph for the offset language. But it was dollar for dollar. And right from the start, I said to Jim, there's no incentive here for. Connolly to even go apply for the loan. If dollar for dollar, they have to return it to the districts. So. I think. Most of the districts are pretty comfortable with the template. I'm comfortable with putting in our attorney's language for that one paragraph. I don't think it'll make a huge difference to Connolly. It's just language about why we're making the payment. It quotes, it quotes a chapter and says something about. You know, sustainability. So I don't mind using John's language there.
Barbara or Jim, whoever can answer this question. And and the crazy scenario, if if this were to continue, you know, like into the fall, does this bind us for however long? We're in this situation or is this until the end of this school year?
This year, just agreeing for sixty three days.
Can we, it seems like we're moving towards proving. Can we really just do this as an authorization to? To have you or Jim, you know, speaking to you, Barbara. Sign off on an agreement that you find to be an appropriate final form, but we're basically authorizing the. The deal, if you will. And just the reason I want to do that, do it that way is in case. As you're tweaking final wording, there's back and forth with the bus company over something John offered. I don't, I don't think it needs to come back to us for for that kind of wordsmithing.
Yeah.
Is that a fair way to approach it if everybody's comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. But are we saying, so are we saying? That we would take out number three on that? On the agreement? That she sent us?
I think that's right, Kathy. That's the offset language.
Yeah.
Right.
The dollar for dollar language, yeah.
All right. Yeah, I I just wanted to say, I, you know, I'm thankful for Barbara going back with that. You know, getting that, an answer to that question and, you know, the thoughtful process about it. So it makes sense to me, Connolly's. Response to that, so.
Are we authorizing Barbara or Jim to execute an amended agreement here?
Well, Barbara's been having all the conversations.
Are you?
I am, I am procurement and I sign all the contracts with vendors anyway. Yeah.
Alright, so I'll I'll make a motion. I move to authorize Assistant Superintendent Duran. To enter into an amendment to our existing bus contract with Connolly. In. In accordance with her recommendation.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Kendall?
Aye.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Laurie Tosti, aye. And I can't see everyone who's here. So Aaron Williams, are you, are you here?
Yep, I just joined at three thirty. Aye.
Okay, thanks, Aaron. That passes. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Barbara.
So the next piece of this, which I notice is not actually on the agenda, so we'll have to take it up next week. Is the refund of the fees for FY twenty, school year twenty. We discussed it last week, not knowing exactly what that fee would be in terms of of the refunds. And we now know, since we're out for the rest of the year, sixty three days. And that would be approximately ninety one thousand dollars to reimburse. All of the the funds and the complexity. As we move forward is one of, I think, I narrowed it down to three options. One is a full refund. For. Families, two is the ability to credit towards next year's. Payment and three, we've had families who've reached out and said, what if we want to donate our fee back to the schools for the transportation? For next year for other families. So Barbara, I know would love us to eventually settle on one method. But I don't, I don't, as I said to her, I don't know how we actually can do that, because we'll have seniors who probably might want that refund. Again. It ends up being about ninety one dollars a rider. And we may have some who won't apply, but. Towards next year.
Can I just, so I guess I'm okay with two options. I mean, we can put out if somebody wants to donate.
Right.
You know, they just have to send me an email.
Right.
The other piece is we have five hundred registrations that have already come in with next year's money.
Right.
So at the very least, we have to refund those five hundred families. So I'd rather just do it all one way. That's my opinion. You can vote tomorrow, next week.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't see a credit. Credit, credit sounds just logistical nightmare.
It is.
People might have already sent stuff in. We we intentionally held off because we knew what stuff was coming, but. But yeah, I know, three options seems like a nightmare for Barbara.
That's what I'm all about right now. It's nightmares, Paul.
And misery loves company?
Exactly. So, yeah, so so we'll have a a vote for you next week. And I'll I'll let families know that. Probably the recommendation will be a. A refund or a donation if they want. Those would be the two options, so. Because it is a lot of work. It's a thousand vendors we have to set up for the payment. Okay.
On to the next item.
Washington DC. I will have, you had charged us again with going back and asking about the insurance payment that was made. And was it explicit with within the paperwork that the family signed? So Barbara went back to Mary Moynah and got a copy of of what was actually delivered to families. And what I can clearly see is that there was no explicit indication that the. Percentage wise of what was being covered for the cost that people had paid. With their insurance. So it didn't say only thirty percent or seventy percent would be reimbursed. Because of the insurance payment. So my recommendation is is. I I believe we need to be paying the full amount back to. All of the families that paid whatever they paid in. Including their insurance payment. But Barbara, can you explain that piece on Mary? A little more in depth or?
Yeah, so on the payment sheet that went out to parents explaining the cost did clearly identify that forty five dollars of what they were paying would go towards insurance. But it never explained what the trip insurance was covering and not covering. And Mary said, no, they never gave anything to the parents that indicated it was just seventy five percent of the non-reimbodable deposit.
Right.
So, you know, I agree with Jim. I I think people are expecting all their money back and I think we have that obligation.
So.
There's a hundred, hundred and eighty one families.
Right.
Is there any recourse against the tour company?
It's in the contract. We have a signed contract saying it's non-reimbodable.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, that goes back to Paul's question last week as well. And, you know, we're. Struggling with those companies that just will not work with with schools and. You know, their their contract is up, so. Whether we use them in the future or not, I don't know. But. Hopefully, we have options for the for the tour. We've used them for at least fifteen to eighteen years, I think. And. So I, so I think. The question that you asked last week also was about, okay, how many of these? Areas are going to impact overall costs and. So for instance, okay, if this is a twenty thousand dollar cost to the district, how are we going to afford that? What are the other costs of having our hourly employees being paid? What are the other costs of of of? Say. The preschool, EDP, et cetera, when revenues aren't coming in. Fair and legitimate concerns, I I think. With the savings that we will retain from the bus. Contract. That we can find that twenty thousand dollars within that to certainly offset. The Washington DC trip. I think that's the approach we should be looking at. So, I mean, that's, and that's my recommendation. I know Barbara and I have talked about this. We do feel strongly that those families need to get their their money back. And we can, we can cover that cost with. Through the negotiations that we had with the bus company.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else they want to ask or comment about that?
No, I I agree with it, but just going forward for next year, year after.
Oh, yeah.
What the hell is that forty five dollars really for? Because. You pay forty five dollars to protect forty eight seventy five. That's good. That's a, that's a good deal for the insurance company that ends up getting that money.
Right.
I don't even know, we should just not have the. Forty five dollars to protect seventy five percent of one hundred and twenty five nets you forty eight dollars and seventy eight cents. That seems. That seems kind of crazy, but.
Well, that's if the event happens before you've paid even more money. You know, that's just based on the timing of this event. But had people paid more.
No, but the rest of the stuff that they that they have paid would would be refunded.
Be refundable.
Right.
Everything else is refundable. So that forty five dollars is just for that. That's, that's, that's a good deal for the for the insurance company.
Yeah, it is. And and again, I I think sometimes extenuating circumstances lead to clarity on other things, right? That that we need to be focused on and. So.
Who's got a motion? Anyone?
I will move. We authorize. The business office to issue full refunds for the DC trip for, for this year.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
I'm staying on this one.
Okay, that's right. Kathy? Laurie? Aye. Mark, you're getting a big check in the mail. Okay, next up.
Thank you, everyone.
So or or do we want to make Barbara's life even worse and say people can donate too?
Yeah, there's only a hundred and eighty one of these people.
Right.
Yeah. Next up, we have the Accept Collaborative Bus Contract.
So we will not be having a vote on this tonight. I just wanted to give you a heads up. We didn't know. So. As you know, I'm, you know, the the chair this year of the collaborative and. Part of our discussions as a group with the collaborative is we had asked Donna Flaherty, our. Executive Director to apply for the SBA loan as well. And as of last week, we hadn't heard. If we, if the Except Collider had been accepted into the program. And if they were, how much it was going to be and what the offsets are. We just found out on. Monday that they have been accepted into the program. There'll be, so now they will actually be going through, making some adjustments. To. Their revenue stream and expenses for each district. So we don't know what that even looks like. Whether it's has to deal with the busing or if it's going to deal with even programming. So. We're voting on Friday as a as a board to allow Donna to enter into an agreement for the SBA loan. And then we'll have more work ahead of us to determine how that impacts our district. But we anticipate a refund. Or a credit towards next year's services. Barbara, anything more on the business side that you've heard?
Yeah, when we talked about the transportation as the business manager group. We were told that there's probably a ten percent reduction to the districts for fuel cost. And they only have about fifty percent of their vans out on the roads. So their insurance company is going to give them a credit for sixty days of insurance on half of their vans. So they're trying to figure out what those savings are too, and those will be passed on back to the districts.
So and we're, yeah, so that's what Barbara and I were talking about today, is trying to figure out what's the best approach for next year's budget with the collaborative. Refund reimbursement, et cetera. They can refund us or credit us, Paul. So just, it was just more of a heads up.
Did I go, Mr. Justine's comments? Thank you for, you know, quasi being a vendor for us as well and having the transparency and integrity. To. Take that into account and do the numbers based on the. The revenues that you get from the SBA loan.
Yeah, so we're, we're working towards that to, again, I I think with the collaborative, our job is. As superintendent is to do what's best for all districts and within the collaborative. And that's why it's a slower process. To ensure those numbers are are accurate for us. Okay.
Thank you, Jim. Out of district payments for FY twenty twenty?
Yeah, so here's the next one, right? That will be coming down the pipeline, still awaiting more direction from the Department of Ed. And how we approach things. I I'm going to turn this over to Barbara and Kathy can can chime in because she listens to a lot of. Russell John. Russell Johnston, who's one of the associate commissioners. They're all over the map. I'm not going to lie to you. There's, there's no consistency at the state level with regard to how to handle vendors across the board. And out of district costs are, are one of them. If our students are getting services, should we be paying? Absolutely. I, no doubt that we should be doing that. But at what level of service are they, are they getting? Is the continued question. So I'll defer to Barbara first and then Kathy if she wants to fill in.
Right. So, yeah, this, this has been up and down one day to the next. One day, the business manager with service is like, no, we have to negotiate with each one of those vendors individually. The next day is, nope, we've got to pay them all in full. OSD, the operational services division, did come out with a memo this week that says they set the rates and legally that is what we have to pay. And then get circuit breaker reimbursement. So we're still waiting to see what Desi's going to come out with. But I think right now we need to keep paying them. I did hear from two different families in Ashland after I made statements in other meetings saying, you know, their students are day placement somewhere else, that they're not going into school, but they are still getting their services. They're happy with what they get. I don't know if that's true for every vendor, for every out of district student. The only place I was looking into was residential students. I believe we have four of them. I need to clarify with Kathy, we have emails going back and forth, and I just want to clarify, I think three of them are still in the residential home. But one of them is not. He's, that child is back in their house. So we should be able to switch from the residential rate to the day rate if the student is still getting services. So I'll follow up with Kathy on that. That's it.
Anything Kathy further to add to that economic piece?
Not really, because all I would do is echo what Jim and Barbara, you have both already said, which is that the messaging that we're getting has been pivoting to steal a phrase, Jim, that you use. And messages seem to be somewhat inconsistent. And I also feel that the messages tend to be carefully worded to allow for a change in interpretation at a later point in time. So I am quite concerned because there isn't the clarity. And I think the other piece that Jim, you and I had started to go back and forth on emails with, and I know Barbara is also aware, is that the financial impact of the loss of revenue also hits circuit breaker reimbursement. And so while OSD sets pricing that is non-negotiable and these are services that can be applied to circuit breaker, that reimbursement rate could change. There's no guarantee of a reimbursement rate. So, you know, that it, it all becomes a muddy picture. I think it's fair to continue to constantly ask questions and to keep a watchful eye until more clear guidance comes out.
And if, maybe that will never happen. Some of the, some, a lot of the guidance always has like the last sentences, but do whatever you want anyway. Right. You know, or do what's right for your district. So.
It is, and it, I mean, the challenge is, again, every district is in a different position and we've got to, to your point last week, Laurie, we've got to, we've got to position ourselves to, to be in the best financial situation we can be for FY twenty and FY twenty-one. So.
Right. I mean, if I have anything to say about it now, which we can't, it sounds like there's still more information that we're waiting for.
There is, yeah.
But if that continues to be sort of the messaging is, you know, well, you can do this, but you can do that. We recommend this, but it's up to you. You know, I'll, I'll just say again, you know, a really close look about what's best for us. Obviously, they're both about the same. But, you know, any money that we spend somewhere, especially for services that we're not receiving is, is money that we can't spend somewhere else. Maybe not necessarily when it comes to certain accounts and so forth, and I understand that, but I, I don't feel as badly about not paying for things that we're not using unless there's a really good reason for that.
If I could sort of piggyback on what Laurie's saying, and it certainly reflected upon these thoughts, is thinking about bus contract issue before this discussion we had earlier today. And, you know, there is something that's more than just a bit off-putting and annoying to have a commissioner say, you, you know, we want you to pay, but knowing that you have limited resources. You've got to look more long-term than the immediate, right? So we've got to look at, apologize if the dog barking is, is coming through. You know, you've got to be able to look in the long term and not just in the next eight weeks, but next year and the year after. And make sure that we're putting ourselves in a position to what's best for our kids. And not placate what the commissioner is saying because the state doesn't want to see more unemployment compensation costs, and they're basically treating us as a a source of funds. And if, if we're paying employees, then unemployment's not paying employees. You know, I know that circles back around to some degree back on, on the town and the schools, but I, I don't have anything other to add than I share your frustration, Laurie, and your viewpoint on it, which is, you know, at some point this, well, do what's best for you is, is really going to drive me to say, all right, I'm not even going to listen to them telling us what they want us to do, you know, unless they're putting money behind it. It's sort of like saying, yeah, it would be really nice if you could. I think we've got to keep our eye on the ball, and, and I think we are in terms of what's right for the town of Ashland, for the Ashland schools, for the kids, for our staff. And I think if we stay focused on that, ultimately, we'll come out in the right spot.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, the, the challenge here I, I see is expectations, right? So when we enter into a contract or with a company, we're going to pay them, there's expectations in that contract, right? And so, you know, like Jim said, if, if a vendor is supplying our students with services to whatever level, and that, that's, I think this is challenging part, you know, how do you define what it, what the right level is? And especially for, in a, in a segment of unique learners, right? That's a, that's a very, very complex thing to do, but, you know, I, I'm in agreement that if you are meeting the needs of our kids the same way that our teachers are trying to do, then it makes total sense what the commissioner is saying that we should be paying, you know, because those are our services rendered, it's rendered differently, but, but how do you do that? And it's not as, not as simple, you know, in, in reality as it might be to say, particularly when the services we're talking about are even more varied than they are with, you know, the, the children that we have in district, right? So I, I, I kind of agree with what you said, is we, we need to keep our eye on the ball, but yes, that doesn't get us any closer to being able to articulate what that ball looks like, right?
Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah.
On that right now, so we can move on to the next topic, which is.
Kelly, given her presentation.
Update. Something sad.
Yeah, so I've asked Kelly and Dave here, just to give some broad stroke overviews of things that are, have been going on in their schools. But, you know, we're not looking for any decisions to be made. I want to be clear. I've, I've probably received more emails in the past twelve hours than I'd received in the past four weeks on remote learning. All from senior parents and wondering about graduation and, and I, and I am consistent in my messaging, saying Ms. Sankar is turning over every stone in looking at every single option that we think is going to be viable to recognize and honor the, the seniors who are much deserving to be honored. It will not be and cannot be on June seventh as originally planned. Our schools are closed through June twenty-ninth. That was clear yesterday by the governor. And he has not set standards yet, nor has the commissioner with regard to what number of groups of people can be allowed in, in a facility or on a, on ground together. Those are things that will be coming over the next few weeks. The commissioner made that known yesterday, that they are trying to figure out what are options. They eventually have said things will be local decisions for sure. But that being said, we have the parameters of, of the guidance from, from the state. So with that framework, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
And thanks for saying that. As we're sitting here, I just got an email from a site council member with an update on the class of twenty twenty parent Facebook page and, you know, and, and people wanting some decisions made and we, we can't make a decision right now. So, you know, we will keep reiterating that. You know, I've looked at, I don't know how many websites, you know, our vendor, Justin's has put out a free resource to every district in the state on ideas on how to handle graduation. So, but with really just getting the definitive answer yesterday, we, we haven't been able to make any decisions yet. But what we have been doing in Ashland High School, I think since we actually started the remote learning, you know, teachers started at all different levels. Some really, really struggled with the concept of moving to, to remote learning. And, you know, some got it right away and, but overall, they have just been incredible and the work that they have done and put out. I think we're definitely still trying to find a balance. You know, we hear from some students that they're not getting enough and that, you know, they, they need to have more work. And we hear from some that they're incredibly overwhelmed. So, you know, we're just, the teachers have been amazing. And anytime you say to them, you know, this student is having a really hard time figuring how to balance this workload or how to access what they should be accessing. The, the teachers have been nothing but flexible. So we're really focusing on working with the students to say, you need to, you need to figure out that schedule that works for you. And do what you can if you're in a position that you can't get to everything. I think we are certainly finding a level of, you know, a number of students who are working because they need to right now to help support their families. And then many who are working because they were already in positions that are now getting, they're getting called in for more and more hours. And so they're trying to figure out how to balance that in a lot of cases. As of a little under a week ago, teachers, we had, teachers were feeling that the majority of students, eighty to a hundred percent are showing up in classes and doing what they're being asked to do. The, the equity issues that we've seen and that, that we expected to see. I don't, I don't think any of the data that we have collected has been surprising. The numbers are lower, down to fifty percent in some cases in our CP one classes. And those are the kids that, you know, we know need, need the most support. And they're definitely having the hardest time showing up and engaging. We're also seeing, which we completely understand, that students are, seem to be picking and choosing what classes they're engaging in. You know, Unified Arts are seeing lower numbers than English. And so, you know, we, we're working with that and we understand that students, as they figure out how this is going to work for them, need to prioritize and, and that's a life skill from my point of view. In terms of how we are grading at this point, we're, we're still really playing around with ideas and, and struggling with that. We've, we tried to start off with, you know, in more, you know, open concept of how we currently grade, where, you know, most of our departments are pretty consistent, but everyone does things slightly different across departments. We are moving towards making some, some more structured guidelines for all our teachers. You know, I think, I think at the teacher's request, this has been such a big shift for them. Grades are, you know, such a priority at the high school level. You know, I think one of the blessings has been that we're starting to have some conversations about, let's really learn to learn and not worry about the grades. I, I am recommending that we look at for transcript purposes that semester one is what is transcript, transcribed and moving forward, and that all students that are currently at Ashland High School will have a GPA that's based on fourteen terms instead of sixteen. I mean, we've already heard from the colleges that especially, you know, with our kids that are graduating this year, they understand what that transcript is going to look like for that senior that's coming to them in the fall. And we started to hear, if you haven't had a chance to listen to it, Mr. McGann did a webinar with our four top colleges just last week to have those conversations about what's this going to look like for the juniors. And the colleges are saying, we understand, you know, we're going to be looking, as we always do, for the rigor of classes that match what we typically expect as opposed to what that grade was for your, you know, for your junior semester too. So the goal would be that this year, the number that ends up on a final transcript, transcripts are different in how they look than report cards, and that transcript only has the final grade. And we spent some time talking to I pass, there really is no clean or easy way to take all of our full year courses and semesterize them so that we have a first term grade and a credit, no credit for a second semester. So, you know, the recommendation was that we use the grade that the students had. I think I just froze. I froze in here, you know?
Okay.
So to use the grade that students had at the end of semester one. And then we will mark on our transcript and in our school profile that goes to, you know, that's posted and goes to all colleges that it's assumed that the student completed what they needed to do to complete credit if they had one point O credits for a full year course. But that the grade is actually reflective of what they had earned first semester. And that they've earned their credit for a second semester for the course. There's certainly a couple of graduation requirements that we need to look to waive, whatever's, you know, school committee policy. We have some students that have not completed their community service requirement, which we would hope that would be waived. We have very few students and I, and I do not know right now if there's any that are even second semester who waive the wellness requirement in order, as varsity athletes. I think they were all first semester, but I, I have counselors looking into that. All that paperwork is in their offices right now. Let me think, what else? I don't know, I guess I'd ask what questions you have. I'm trying to think that about covers where we're at right now. I'm sure I'm forgetting things.
Any questions from a sinker or comments? Concerns?
Just, just thanks, Kelly. You know, you have a unique set of challenges. It's not just remote learning, so. So, thanks for, for you and your staff and all of our hard work.
Kind of just curious if, you know, your sense of how, how kids and families are holding up from social emotional perspective? I mean, are you getting feedback on that?
Yeah, that is our biggest concern right now. Students that we, that would never have been a concern if we were in the building, are students that are having the most challenges. You know, we're, we're hearing from more students and families about the struggle with figuring this out and how to manage it. And so I, they're not holding up great. You know, I think some are doing, are doing well. A lot are saying, I'm sleeping till noon and then getting on, you know, we're doing class meetings, one a day with each, with each, with each grade. And we're hearing a lot of kids, you know, I just got up, I can't get in a routine. But I'm going to get on because I just want to see some, you know, some faces.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Kelly, this is Erin. Do you feel like that's um, just sort of part teen transition and like, like, are you worried at all about that being indicative of depression for?
Yes, transition um, and feeling that overwhelmed of how do I, this is due to me, how do I get it all done? Um, you know, I know the counselors have talked about kids are responding well to the, you know, take a deep, you know, take a deep breath. Do my assignment. Don't feel like you have to get, you know, all right, you're behind six assignments right now, just do one today. Um, and then let's talk about the next one. Um, so I think as as teachers and administration and counselors have given kids more permission to do that, they've been able to ease up on themselves a little.
Mark, did you want to say something? You've got a, um, can you unmute yourself or do we need to do that for you?
My quick question would be um, because I'm trying to understand, it's a brand, it's brand new to all and it's brand new to me. How will we get to the regular school opening past September if you get open again? How would this work on professionalism, the professional calendar days in the regular school day if you get open? How would that work? I'm not sure. I'm asking the question right, but who can answer it? I just trying to figure out, when regular school gets open, how is this going to work in the professional days that you got on the calendar? Thank you.
Are you talking about like the days that the teachers take for like professional development, Mark? Yeah, um, I I think we're not there yet, right, Jim? I mean, I think when we don't know when we're going back, but when we do, there are a lot of things that are going to have to be figured out about how we're going to use that time to get everybody back on track.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, and to that point, and let me be the first to publicly just state it, you know, I talked to Kelly and I said, one of the things that I think is critically important is we need to think about uh, moving away from our traditional mid-year exams. And and by doing so, we gain ten teaching days um, for the most part in terms of uh, the week of review, uh, which many teachers do, they don't spend necessarily the whole week doing it, but but there's time that's allocated to it. And then the following week are half days for midterm exams and to me, um, well, I think there's uh, better ways to assess students on a, on a more regular basis and in a formative way besides a a one period exam. That gains teaching days back, that gains opportunity to close gaps that are occurring. Um, as I told you last week, I was laughed at by the commissioner by suggesting we should get rid of MCAS next year uh, to gain twenty to thirty days back. Those are common sense things uh, to me, but um, I'm on my own island, so.
Hey Jim, what if you've got a school commit, or I'll, I'll say one parent at least. But you want to be on that island with a few more people, can you
Yeah.
do that without serious consequence to the district? Like if we all supported you and you said?
Yeah. No, Erin, that's a good point. It's a good question. I mean, I've, I've relayed that message to our um, to our state senator um, and our representative, and that's the avenue I take because again, what we have to remember is it's not the commissioner who makes that call, right? It's a legal um, obligation under master law that we have MCAS, uh, and it's also federal law. So it's a bigger hurdle. I just think there are so many moving parts right now that the the commissioner just didn't really want to entertain even that thought right now. Um, we're trying to get through um, June twenty ninth right now. But, but yeah, I will continue, I will continue. I am pushing it.
Phone last week and and said the same thing. So they're aware of how we feel about it and I believe supporting, but I guess there are a lot of other things that need to happen before they they're willing to entertain that discussion. But and to your point, Mark, too, I mean, as far as professional development goes, on the one hand, you know, maybe we could use some of those days back on teaching and learning, but on the other hand, you know, teachers are going to be getting students that probably don't have everything, you know, that they need from the year before. So there might need to be some extra time, you know, on professional development, so they're ready for the kids that they're going to be getting are going to look different than the kids that they've gotten in the past. Um, so, but that hasn't been worked out yet, but those are all things that need to be considered for sure. But thank you for the question. It's a good one. Anybody else? For Kelly, Kelly, thanks so much for everything you're doing. I know your job is one of the hardest right now in the district. A lot of grief, especially for the seniors and 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 for all the teachers and and you all as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. I think the last thing I I'll say about the high school, I've been blown away by the students' response. You know, they, they want to just keep doing things to help others. And I know, you know, they've, they've talked of getting involved in the senior phone pals program and, you know, they've, they've uh, they wrote cards for George for his birthday on Hunter's birthday last week, I saw that on the news. Um, and they're, they're constantly reaching out with ideas and how can we keep helping, so. Um, that, that's been, it's been awesome to see. And they're always like that, but they're really doing it now.
Yeah, that's nice to hear. There, there are a couple of, you know, opportunities during this period of time that wouldn't otherwise have been there, so. That's good too. Jim, did you have your hand up or was that?
I was clapping for Kelly. No, I, I think the only thing I want to make sure we remember to put on the agenda moving forward is we will have to waive because it is school committee policy uh, with regard to graduation requirements. So we will have to um, vote uh, next meeting to waive uh, any requirements with regard to community service and or uh, the physical education requirements. We're not looking to change credit requirements, but those two factors that where kids can't turn information in and or perform uh, those um, obligations, that's all, so.
So I have one, a question just about, so graduation going forward, when I mean, obviously, we're going to do something, so when like, we'll just.
I don't think she knows.
Yeah, yeah. We don't know. We, we need, again, I, I want to be clear, I think we need to to be patient, which people can't be, I get that. Um, but we need guidance is coming from the state. Um, guidance is coming from the state with regard to gatherings, group gatherings and what that can look like. I, I texted Michael Herbert today. I don't know about town meeting. Right? In terms of how many, what, what a gathering constitutes, can we um, socially distance six feet apart in the gymnasium with chairs? Um, to, or do we limit, i- if, if, if gathers are limited to a hundred people, well, we've got two hundred that are graduating. Uh, so, so what does that look like, right?
Yeah.
So we, we just, we, we need that guidance coming from the state first. Uh, it's not that Kelly or I don't want to have a traditional graduation, it's we can't guarantee that right now. But we have to look at all options for our kids. Yes, this is what we want to do. There's not one of us that doesn't want to honor our kids in this way. But that doesn't mean it can happen. We have to, we have to follow the guidelines that we've been given as well uh, at a state level, so. That's all.
I have two kids graduating college and I know at least one of them at at UMass with whatever, five thousand students.
Yeah.
Is happening online. I don't know how that's going to work.
Yeah.
But um, they've already made that decision.
Yeah.
I haven't heard about the other one, but it'll probably be something similar. I, I can't imagine that something. And theirs were a little bit earlier too, so you can say for sure that in, in early to mid May, there are no gatherings of people. You know, maybe when we get to June, there's some, something that can work out, but at least for now, it's, it's, everything is uh, online.
Right. And and I think to, to assume that we can do this would be erroneous. To assume that we can have a traditional graduation even in July would be erroneous. Uh, we don't have that information yet. We can plan, but that doesn't mean um, another outbreak occurs and what about those families? Kelly is so good about talking about equity and and those families that that are heading off to the military, that aren't going to be able to to participate if we do something in August. Uh, those families who are going off to college early, if they go off to college, what does that look like? So every, every stone is being turned over. Um, nothing has been you know, I, I don't think, no decisions have been made because we want to make sure we have all of the information before we do that. And and I will be very clear, not every family is going to be happy. Um, that's the bottom line. We're not going to satisfy need of every graduating senior parent and kid. I've resigned myself to that fact. I see Stephen.
Can I just say, we, we, Kathy, we were, we have a survey that we want to put out to parents and to, and to students. Um, you know, to get an idea of what people are interested in, that, you know, that we were anticipating early next week.
Yeah.
So hard to, like, you know, you know, we, and I had a principal's meeting, regional meeting last Friday morning. Um, so just a couple of days ago, it seems a long time ago. And that was one of our big concerns in the region when we, we, this is what we were talking about, you know, what are we going to do if they you know, with graduation? And that was the big concern was if, even if we, we move it to August, we don't do anything in June and then we still can't do anything in August. Then what? Um, so.
So that's what I was thinking, like, maybe there's creative, totally different ideas, like a big parade.
That's one of the ideas we have gone.
Right? You stand out on your yard.
We've got.
Somebody drives by and honks.
Yeah, there are fifty, sixty ideas, so.
Excellent, great.
Steve, Steve, I unmuted you.
Oh, thank you, Jim. Hi, everybody. I, I hope everybody is, is doing well, being safe, staying healthy. Um, you, you know, this is just a heartbreaking uh, discussion to listen to, uh, you know, the impact on all of our kids and you know, I feel for you, Kelly. I mean, it's got to be, you know, a challenging situation. Uh, I was, while I was listening, I did call one of my colleagues on the board that is on a subcommittee for the scholarships that we give out and you know, just keep us informed as to how you want to manage that. I mean, we, we are going to put that on our agenda for next week and you know, certainly encourage students to uh, continue to apply for it, but uh, just keep us, keep everybody informed. I know um, being involved in the farmer's market as well, we do a scholarship, uh, so, you know, we don't want to uh, uh, certainly have that fall through the cracks, so please keep us informed.
Our scholarship committee is still meeting Monday afternoons like we would have been doing if we were in the building and um, you know, talking a lot about making sure those um, still happen. I know our counseling department is still posting everything regarding scholarships and kids have been spending time doing that, which is great. Um, you know, one of the things that they're, the counseling department is trying to get out to everybody that does scholarships is um, working with groups to maybe change how they do scholarships. You know, there's some that want a paper copy of everything together. Um, and that's just not, not doable right now. Um, so I know they're, they're trying to reach out to as many scholarship groups as possible to get that message out. And hopefully maybe, you know, understanding, um, one of the other concerns has been some scholarships are written in the way that it has to go to a student that is starting college in the fall. Um, and that might not be an option for a lot of students, or students might change what they're going to do come fall, given the direction some of the colleges are going to, so looking for some flexibility with scholarships around that. Um, if that's part of the language this year.
Okay, well, thank you. And and let us know what we, we, we need to do, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Kelly. Any other questions for Kelly before we move on to Dave? All right, thank you. Dave, what's happening at the middle school?
Um, a, a lot of, it's funny, listening to Kelly, a, a lot of the reactions of some of the students are, are similar and not dealing with the graduation piece, although talking to our eighth grade teachers about you know, what closure and what the end of the middle school experience looks like for our eighth graders who are moving on to the high school. I, I think on a positive, uh, we have over ninety percent of students who are participating in the online learning doing some level of the work. I think it varies. Students are also picking and choosing a little bit, some of them, which, y- you know, um, maybe not doing as much of their specials work as they are might be in, in English or math, so pretty similar. I, I think we're most concerned, you know, about students' mental health, right? Their well-being and and how they're doing. That's, that's the, that's the biggest concern. And for that, I got to say, I'm just a huge compliment again to the teachers. I think they're working really hard to create some authentic experiences for students to make sure that they're doing okay. Teams, if there is a student they're not hearing from or they're concerned about, they're right to the guidance counselor, we're having those conversations and and conducting outreach, um, almost immediately, just to try to find out what's going on and or figure out what they need for support, so that's, it's a huge, so the teachers are doing an amazing job, as are the counselors for our guidance counselors in each grade, so that's been amazing. I think uh, some, there are students who are overwhelmed with remote learning. I, I think whether it's just not the amount, it might be the amount of work, but it might also just be adjusting and organizing to learning this way. Even students who maybe when we were in school, we're doing really well, uh, might not be doing so well in this environment. And I think some of the students who were struggling in school and and had a hard time motivating, had a hard, a hard time being engaged or you know, they, they were still working with those students to, to keep them engaged, so. Um, and on the other hand, teachers are reporting there are some students who are staying on top of it, or being, who are communicating and and doing really well. So there are some positives uh, for sure. Uh, but certainly we have that group of students who are, who are overwhelmed with it and struggling with it, so. I think for great, in terms of the grading piece, we, we've had those conversations with teachers um, over the past week or so and ultimately, we're just looking for teachers to track what students that are participating, that are engaging in the work and ultimately doing, doing their best. So I, I think working with I pass and and that's what we want to communicate via I pass or I parent is that students are engaging. And a lot of teachers are using Google Classroom to provide different feedback, a more specific feedback, but ultimately, that's what we're looking at for grades and in terms three, four uh, in, into this last term, so. Um, each week I meet with uh, students, you know, I met with seventh grade today. And I was curious to see how it would go, given the news that I, I would agree, I think a lot of us, a lot of students maybe saw this news coming, but when you actually get the news yesterday, um, you wonder how students are, are going to react, right? So you know, our, our councils are well aware of that and they've sent surveys out to students and are looking to connect with them, which is, which is great. They were pretty quiet in the Zoom today. A, a lot of the questions right now are around logistics. Things that we really don't have an answer yet. You know, Mr. D, I want to get into my locker. What is the, what is the end of the year look like? Do I get to see my teachers? You know, some of those things that you know, these, these innocent questions, they just want to, they just want to see each other, right? Um, so those are tough questions to answer. And we're waiting for guidance from, from the state on that, but um, you know, th- those are so far what we've been getting. And I have my eighth grade Zoom tomorrow. Again, I have a student Zoom each week, so it'll be interesting to see what comes up in the eighth grade Zoom and students have to say or questions, you know, that they have, so. And finally, with teachers, we have had, just started the conversations about closure, just being official, of course, yesterday. About, you know, some teachers just talking about how do we create that level of closure for each grade, and then especially our eighth grade, where there is the closure of not just the grade, but the middle school experience, right? So, uh, you know, teachers are just starting to, around ideas. You know, same thing about what closure looks like, about what we can do to end this year and create that given the parameters of social distancing, so. You know, we could do it virtually and a lot of students are participating there, so those are, those are some of the conversations we're having. I think overall, it's going really well. Teachers have been amazing and students have been emailing me if they have questions just in general about the end of the year, they're reaching out to teachers. But on the other hand, you know, there are students, of course, who are struggling and families that we're concerned about and um, it's keeping us busy day to day, making sure we're conducting that outreach and reaching out and communicating to families, so uh, there's a balance there for sure. And we're still, again, trying to navigate that balance and it'll be curious to see how, with the news, and now it's going till June. How students and families will navigate that balance and, and learn about what we can do. So that's kind of an overall view and I'd be happy to take any questions on, on any of those pieces as well.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I got, I guess I have a couple, uh, Dave. I mean, you know, I've got two in your building. And just one of the things that I think has been um, that I've seen as a struggle is really just sort of understanding what's going on. You can always try to ask your kid, but as you know, middle school kids don't always share a lot. And you know, at least with when you had I pass or I parent available, you could see what was being done and. Use that as a tool for following up and saying, oh, you know, how'd that go or what was the problem with that? And I think one of the things I've struggled with and I suspect some other parents are as well is, or how do I ask my kids or how can I see how how they're doing? Because, you know, at least quite frankly, my house, my kids are sitting down, they're they're representing, they're getting their stuff done and hitting send off the. You know, through some system and I never see it. I don't, you know, unless they're asking for help, but I don't I don't know what's going on all that much and. I'll see some of that's individually on me, but I guess I'm really asking the question from a. From a, from a community perspective, you know, how can parents sort of make sure they're doing the best? Given all the circumstances of of what's going on in their own lives, that they're. Aware of what their kids are doing and supporting the kids.
Yep, that's a great question. So we've worked, I've worked with I passed all the past week on creating a sort of a different. System, so when teachers put in assignments, instead of putting in grades, really, it's it's tracking what they're participating in. I parent, I'm sending a message out to families. I parent's going to be open for next week, Mark, for that reason, just so parents can go in and just see what they've been and see what they've been doing. So to be able to go into I pass and I parent like they normally do, I think it's going to be easier because it'll be. More of a one stop shop, to your point with I parent, you know it's there, you know how to use it, and rather than try to chase all the emails or. Try to get it, you know, extract information from your child, which can be difficult at times, they can pour it into I parent and they'll be able to see how they're doing grades by, so. You know, I'll send that out, that's going to be opening up next week, so parents can go in next week and see. What they've been doing or what assignments they still have yet to do, so they can open up and have those conversations. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was saying, how how are kids really getting, you know, feedback? I'm thinking about. If there's a writing assignment in ELA or social place or whatever, how are kids getting feedback on on their work product from their teachers?
Yeah, they're getting it through Google Classroom or Google Drive, depending how they're sharing that information. So, yeah, that's how they're getting, and they can get that additional feedback beyond just whether they're doing the assignment or not. So they're, they are currently getting that, getting those pieces and getting that information, so. And they can still continue to do that. Teachers are going to continue to be, you know, to be able to send that information out and. And it's specific feedback if they are, to your point, getting an assignment where it might be a writing assignment and. They're they're giving comments on what they're doing for their writing, so they can continue to do that for sure.
The other, the observation, I guess I've had just listening your comments, but I suspect it's also probably helpful. Up at the high school, you know, particularly middle school kids, I think a lot of them are still struggling to learn how to learn. And the study skills and and you're making, made a comment about. How, you know, some are kind of adapting well and some aren't, and I'm just. I'm curious sort of in the overall development of kids that age, whether there's an opportunity, given the change in in. Instruction and how it's being delivered. To take some time and and have teachers working with kids on those sort of more structural study skills type. Things, you know, particularly, I mean, as it relates to what's going to be going on in the next two months. Maybe that's already happening, but it just was something that dawned on me as you were talking about, hey, some kids are just fine with this and some are not. Like, some of that's because kids are at that age in particular, just really still learning how to learn.
Can I give that a second, but also an amen? Especially as a mom of somebody who, Dave, you will have next year, God willing. But seeing the lack of the appropriate study skills to be able to navigate this, even at the fifth grade level. And thinking about the preparedness for middle school. I'm wondering if, and maybe it is also like, if if you did something that was not just six, seven, eight, but also maybe start including the fives. Knowing that they're about to walk into this, I think some sort of learning on the study habits. Would be immensely helpful and I don't know, and maybe also with Kathy's coordination of especially. For the kids with learning disabilities, like what are best practices? Like, reading on a computer and not having a printout to be able to take notes on isn't a best practice. We figure that out in our own home, but. Just thoughts around that of like, could we come up with some study habit curriculum?
Yeah, I I to speak to Mark's piece, I know that the teachers now are are. Are doing that through reading their Google assignments. A lot of the teachers are giving those notes to students right within the assignment, which I think is helpful and. It's not the same as as being in the classroom, and I think it's challenging for teachers as well and. It doesn't look the same, and I know our teachers work hard on those study skills and they are woven right in with their their class. In terms of doing an assessment or as they approach an assignment. Now I'm seeing teachers, because I'm. I'm a student on their Google Classroom, so I see what they're assigning students and they're building those pieces right into the assignment. Try this first, then do this, or, you know, have some fun today, or so they're they're giving them those things when they share them with them, so they're doing a great. They're doing a great job of that, in addition to working with counselors who are helping with them, helping them organize. I know I was on the seventh grade Zoom today and I know our guidance counselor is sending out some organizational tools for students. I don't know if she did it today or was doing it tomorrow, but. Those are things that they're doing remotely. Certainly challenging and I don't know, to be as effective as you are when we're in physically in school. But I know that's something that's that is definitely, teachers understand that organizationally, some students, this is. This presents another challenge for many students in addition to everything else, right? So they're doing everything they can to do it and working with the guidance council to also. Support students to be able to know that. Yeah, and it's not this, not to say it's the same though.
No, understood.
It's, yeah.
I see you, Mark. Did you have something you wanted to ask? Got to unmute, yes, thank you. You're good.
My question to you, Mr. Mr. Dej, how much of that coaching and teacher? Is coming out of you to do this because it's like forming a new reloading per se. You got to start anew.
Yeah, it it is.
Yeah, yeah, this is turtle talk. There you go. And how well do you see, as in your eyes, both eyes, the students are hearing you? That'd be my question.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a, it's a great question, and I think it it's a struggle at some level, Mark, right? Because you think back to my, your coaching days or teaching days where you're having that face to face and you're having those personal connections. It's not the same doing it remotely and and we're great to have Zoom and Google Hangouts and video conferencing, but. I think I'm sure that a lot of the students and even teachers, I mean, the teachers are talking about it, just missing the students or feeling I just. Ask them and, you know, they're they're having the exchanges and doing some of the work and preparation. And it's tough not seeing the students physically do the work and see them through it, and so I think that's the challenge, right? So I think, I I think for me. Zooms with with the students each week, just to hear what they're, just to give them some information and hear what they're saying and and hear what they're thinking. Is helpful, but it's 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 not the same, and I think that's the challenge for for all of us, but I think everybody, our teachers are. Are are doing a a great job with that and. For me, it's the, it's the same thing where it's it's great to actually see their faces a little bit and hear them a little bit, but. It's it's like I was saying about talking about the study skills, if you think teachers, we're all working hard to do that, it's. It's it's hard because it's not, we we're not, we're not doing what we can do when we're in a classroom, but I I really feel like we're working to do what we can. You know, given these challenges, so, and we just expect the students to do their best with it, and that's the message we keep giving them is, is that's all we can ask, so. To answer your question too, Mark, when I was a teacher and coach and now as an administrator, when I talk to students, just. And we know you're dealing with a lot of challenges, but alls I can do is expect you to give a hundred percent and. And that's, that's the message we give and hopefully that alleviates some of their stress, but I think this is in and of itself is stressful, so.
People like Dej and all the administrators and all the teachers, you know, they're superheroes right now and they've had to call on. Skills from different parts of their lives. It's a good time to remind everybody that, you know, when somebody's preparing to teach like a class online or something. That's usually a skill that they prepare for, you know, for months or longer, you know, it's a, it's like a. A skill that you develop and here we are, it's not as easy, we just all type some numbers to get onto a Zoom meeting to chat. But but that's not what we're asking people to do. So the fact that everybody in in, you know, short order has had to call on whatever skill. And again, we're all at different life experiences and different interactions with technology and all the different money styles of the thousands of students that we're teaching. I mean, there's so many factors that. You know. We weren't prepared for because this isn't our method of delivery, we're at the school where we see people in person and nobody could have anticipated this. So the fact that people are stepping up now and 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 doing what they're doing is really incredible, so thank you. Any other questions or comments for Dave? All right, well, thank you, and we can move on then to, I think you're up next, Kathy, with the warrant.
I don't have any warrants this week.
Okay, thank you, and minutes next?
Sorry, it'll just be the minutes from the fifteenth to fourteenth, there's a tri board and they're still being negotiated on. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
But we do have minutes for the fifteenth.
Yeah, and does anybody have anything on those minutes that we want to call and. Edit, challenge?
I don't have anything.
I don't either, so we have a motion to accept those minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of April fifteen, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Kendall? Mr. Terry?
Hi.
Mrs. Williams? Are you here? Erin, Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
And aye for me, that passes, and next up. We just had a number update. Does anybody want to share anything? Usually I go to Rachel at this point, but we've heard from her. Anything else anybody wants to share with the community or the committee? Seeing none, I guess we can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Kendall? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye for me, good, good night, good eat, good afternoon. All being here, we appreciate all of you. Have a good night.
Perfect timing, four forty-five.